For a city council meeting, I would like to start off by having the clerk call the roll.
Thank you. Are your lights flashing?
No, mine's solid.
Mine's solid.
Mine's solid.
Mine's solid.
Okay, thank you one moment. How about now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mayor Ford?
Here.
May I would you please push your button to indicate that you are here? Thank you, sir. Mayor Potem, it didn't take. Would you try it again, sir?
Yes, I will hit it again. Solid now. Now it blinked again.
Press and hold.
It went off. Press and hold, absolutely. Okay.
Okay.
Still blinking.
Let's try this again. Okay, how about now? Lights flashing?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Ford, press and hold. Thank you very much. It worked. Mayor Potem Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilman McAdonick?
Present.
Button, sir?
It's already pressed.
Is it still flashing or did it go solid?
It's a solid loop.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
Councilman Douglas?
Present.
Sir, you have a quorum. I'm sorry, Mr. Benson?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Everybody's here this evening, and we are here early on August 5th, 2013. The first item we have before the council this evening is an executive session. Is there a motion? I have nothing on my thing here. Okay, no problem. Mr. McAdonick?
Moment for the clerk. Ms. Clerk, we... I can't push my request button.
Okay, we will take care of all this while you're in executive session. We will attempt to. Thank you.
Okay. I would move that we enter executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, sub 4, sub E, for the purpose of developing strategy for negotiations concerning economic development opportunity in the City of Commerce City, and that we enter executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, sub 4, sub E, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding DIA issues.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we will reconvene the meeting approximately 6:30.
Should we try the test agenda? Okay, let's try it. Okay, so I'll go too fast if you want to do a test. You use counsel, right? Or do you use a test body? Your phone's really messing up. Okay, so load test. I'm sure you did delete results, yes. Okay, load test agenda. Oh, I got you. Maybe we're... Now it says results file has not been defined. It's in the results file.
Here we go. See, we're likely... All right. That's better than you, I guess. The gross.
Good. 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 Nope. It's beeping here.
And I got a Walmart right here, and a King Supers right here. And a... All the same ones. And Hilo, I got... I got that. I don't know. Well, unless you have a sheet. Finally starts to slow down.
Yes? No.
But no, well certainly some of it does go to... No, I think I think, you know, Tinkler's got a very sharp pulse. Well, all the taxes are successful. We'll solve that and have it pretty quick. See, you're going now. So... Good thing about that, you got those boxes. It'll take me all day to find it out, but I can do it.
What, do you want me to do the test agenda? Okay. Um... And roll call start. Okay. Good. Good. Nope.
The Justice Center? No. Oh, were they... were they re...
Yes.
No, that's the other one. That's the courthouse. It's right there by the town hall.
Fine.
And where it turns disabled.
Fine. Good. And good. Now you want me to get done and then try to do them independently? Like we've done in the past? Let me try that. And so what about... what about McAdonick?
I think that's...
I wonder if I can do it. Should I get done and then try doing it? All right, I'll just try... I can do it.
But even, even let's just say supposedly...
And I can do it. Ah, okay.
The rule would be... the rule would change.
Still flashing, huh?
We'd practically make it almost worse.
And it's beeping again.
I agree that liquor stores should be treated differently than... Sit down with these type establishments. Those that don't sell packaged liquor should be dealt with differently. Most restaurants are leaving as far as that. There's no carryout. I mean, I have heard of places where you can do that, though I don't think it... God, it was ever happened. It's not right here that I know of. So I would agree that there maybe should be a...
Yeah, I agree.
A different thing there.
Exit out, will? Okay. Is there a way that I can... Hold on, let me try something. Now, this is the question that I have. So if I'm at... if I'm all the way out where I'm at the screen that says projector on, presentation voting system, there's no way for me to display this PowerPoint upon there? How do I do that? Huh? But I'm all the way out of the system. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I see it. Okay. I got you. Thank you. Okay.
Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Test.
Hold on.
Testing one, two. Test, test. Test one, two. Test one, two. Testing. 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 Testing one. Testing one, two. One, two. Testing one, two, three.
I'm the City City Council for August 5th. Is the clerk prepared for the meeting to resume? Thank you. We just got out of a couple executive sessions. Now I would ask that the staff, well, no, first we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. If everybody will stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now will the staff please pass the microphone around so the audience can introduce themselves?
Harvis Thomas.
Guillermo Serna.
Thank you.
Anthony Stolato.
Gene Lefell, Board of Adjustment.
Joy Bishop.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Walt Williams, Economic Development.
Darren Sterling, City Engineer.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. Before we get into the agenda, I want to let everybody in the audience and up here on the council know that our technology seems to be failing us this evening. As far as I know, everything's being taped and live feed on the camera system. However, our voting machine is down as well as the request to speak system up here for the council. So please bear with us this evening as I will be having to have council members raise their hand. And when it comes to voting and comment pieces, I will be going around the dais and asking each council person if they have information to share. But for motions and seconds and things of that nature, please just try to get my attention and I'll do my best to spread it around. So thank you for bearing with us and we'll get into the agenda. First item is approval of the minutes of the April 22nd, 2013 meeting. Yes, ma'am?
Did you want to indicate that no one had signed up to speak under citizen communication?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We did, I did receive the sign up sheet for citizen communication and this evening, nobody has signed up to speak. So therefore, there will be no citizen communication this evening. I will call on Mr. Bullock now.
Move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 22nd, 2013.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for April 22nd, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And we'll move into the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Any council member may ask to have an item removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote. This request does not require a motion or a vote. Does any member on this council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I am open for a motion. Mr. McAdonny.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the attorney please read the titles?
Title of ordinance 1965 reads as follows. An ordinance amending the 2013 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Xcel Energy Foundation CTC Colorado Tree Coalition grant in the amount of $6,000 for tree replacement and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordinance 1967 reads as follows. An ordinance amending the budget, the 2013 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $3,195 for click it or ticket efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of resolution 2013-43. Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Adams County and the City of Commerce City for the November 5, 2013 coordinated mail ballot election. And that's the conclusion of the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The titles have been read. I'll now call for a roll call vote.
Councilman Douglas.
Yes.
Councilman Amador.
Yes.
Councilman Teeter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Yes.
Councilwoman McAdonny.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson.
Yes.
Councilman Benson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bullock.
Yes.
Mayor Ford.
Yes.
Let the record show that the consent agenda has been approved unanimously by the council this evening. Move on in the agenda to ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 1970. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Bullock.
I was raising my hand to move approval.
Okay, is there any questions before I take a motion? Okay, I'm open for a motion, Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve ordinance 1970 on red first reading.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonny.
Second.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one, Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title of ordinance 1970 reads as follows. An ordinance disconnecting from the city that portion of the public right of way for 120th Avenue from Peoria Street to Sable Boulevard.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilman Benson.
Yes.
Councilman McAdonny.
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson.
Yes.
Transferring $1 million from the solid waste fund to the CIPP fund. $561,745 from the impact fees fund to the CIPP fund. And appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the CIPP fund in the amount of $250,000. The fleet management fund in the amount of $58,000. Urban renewal authority fund in the amount of $66,675. And the police donation fund in the amount of $33,689 for a total amount of $2,428,355. And reaffirming prior appropriations and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The title's been read. Now I'll ask for the roll call vote.
Councilman Benson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilman Teeter?
Yes.
Councilman Amador?
Yes.
Councilman McAdonie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock?
Yes.
Mayor Ford?
Yes. Let the record show that ordinance 1971 has been introduced unanimously by the city council. Next item on our agenda is presentations. First presentation is going to be the 2013 second quarter work plan update by City Manager McBroom. Will you lead that off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ford. At the beginning of the year, your staff adopted, for our purposes, a fairly aggressive work plan for the 2013 calendar year. It included both maintaining levels of services and ongoing daily city operations, as well as a list of projects that city council had identified as priorities in the 2013 budget process. Back in May, we presented the first quarter update of our progress on that work plan. And tonight, we are here to review the second quarter update. Bear with us while we make a technical adjustment here. Oh, it's in a PDF. Do you mind just advancing the slides? And you can go ahead and go to the next slide. Our committed work plan for the 2013 year is a set of fairly detailed spreadsheets, but those spreadsheets all tie back into city council's goals for advancing the Commerce City community. So the format of our detailed work plans make that clear. The number of projects and tasks that we've undertaken all tie back into city council's long-range goals for our community. What we did at the first quarter update is present summary sheets for each department, which we thought was a useful way to present the information. But the detailed information is in your packet, and it's in those spreadsheets, and that information is available in the city council packet online as well. So what I'd like to do, similar to what I did back in May, is just summarize the information that is on these summary sheets. I will tell you that the summary sheets themselves have lots of good information in them, as do the spreadsheets that back up the summary sheets. And the summary sheets are organized by departments. I'd like to take a few minutes tonight and review some of the highlights in these department summaries, because the staff is getting an awful lot of work done on your behalf each and every day. Community development is first. Some things of interest on the community development summary sheet. You know that our residential development has picked up. We did issue 88 new residential units in the second quarter. We also issued, I think, two dozen on July 1st. So this number of 88 for the second quarter does not reflect those July numbers. I do have, though, year-to-date, up to August 5th, 243 new residential units for the year. But again, 88 of those permits were issued in the second quarter. Community development, Neighborhood Services Division did issue fewer notices of violation in the second quarter, which we believe suggests good positive results from the proactive efforts that we've been undertaking, such as issuing postcards, letting folks in the community know when we're going to be inspecting their neighborhood, and issuing courtesy notices instead of actual violations. Also, as you might expect, with the increased residential units and the increase in economic development activity in the community, we are seeing an increase in total land use cases that are initially submitted into the city's planning division. The number of cases was 60 in the second quarter compared to 53 in the first quarter. And then finally, the three stationary master plan development concepts were presented at an April public meeting and at the neighborhood outreach in June. And 100 surveys were received, and overall, 60% of those that responded were supportive of the concepts that were presented for our new master plan around our fast track station. The Parks and Recreation Department, again, although all of these things are of note to move the presentation along, I just want to pick a few things off of the sheet. The first one that might be of interest to council, Parks Division did complete work to remove the BMX track that was discussed previously by council that's at Pioneer Park, and in its place constructed additional ball field area and installed spray ground shade structure. The Recreation Division hosted six events, including the fishing frenzy, the pancake breakfast, the neighborhood outreach, martial arts tournament, the CARA gymnastics meet, and youth baseball day, which was the highest attendance in recent history, with about 1,600 folks attending that event. You heard this update from Paul Heebink, our golf division manager, a couple of weeks ago, about our junior camp, our junior golf camp was very successful this year, 71 participants, which was an 8% increase from last year. And our young junior golfers won the Metro Championship title at the PGA Junior League Tournament. And then finally, if you haven't met Robert yet, the city did hire a new food and beverage manager at the Bison Grill. So look for Rob the next time you're in the Bison Grill and say hello, and let them know that, let him know that you're a council member. Okay, go ahead and go to the next one. The second quarter of the year is a time of the year when we both plow snow and cut weeds. So we actually plowed almost 8,400 miles of streets in the city because of the lack of significant snowfall. That was actually a little bit less than we did in the first quarter. But at the same time, we began mowing weeds on 98 acres of open space, including the area around City Hall, to prepare for the Fourth Fest. Additionally, our streets crews patched 1,887 potholes during the second quarter of the year, which was a significant increase over patchwork that we did in the first quarter. As you all know, we also extended the contract with Waste Management into the 2014 calendar year to provide trash services for the approximately 13,850 residential units in the Commerce City community. An active quarter as always for the Commerce City Police Department. Things of note, the city has appointed a designated liaison officer to be the specific point of contact between our police department and the fire district to help improve and streamline communications. We did continue the SRO, the School Resource Officer Program, for the second half of the school year at Prairie View High School, and you will see as part of our budget plan for the 2014 year, the ability to continue funding that position into the 2014 calendar year. Our victim services unit, what a tremendous job these folks do for the community, very much unsung heroes in our organization. They provided services to 147 victims during the second quarter. And then finally, an emphasis for us is to try to work on reducing officers that are injured in the line of work. We certainly want them, we want to reduce the possibility of getting injured during training. So we did see a 36% decrease in work-related injuries compared to the first quarter of Our economic development folks continue to be extremely active. You've seen a presentation from our staff several weeks ago, results of the ICSC conference. We did have a record number of contacts this year at 97. You're starting to see actual development at the reunion marketplace, that would be the McDonald's and the Les Schwab Tire Center. We also expect to see construction from the Covenant Group and the Platt Valley Medical Center. Our finance office, again, a lot of their work is to support the work the rest of us do on a daily basis, but they are actively out making sure that folks are adhering to the city's tax code, and did contact 149 delinquent businesses in the second quarter, but also issued 98 new business licenses for new businesses to the Commerce City community. Our court folks are seeing an increase in summonses, up 20% from the first quarter. And finally, something I typically don't think about, our payroll folks issued 3,978 payroll payments in the second quarter. Again, it's important work that helps our organization continue to function. Social media continues to be a strong effort of improvement for the city's organization, and our communications division saw a fairly significant increase in several areas. We did notice 553 views of the May 6th city council meeting. That's significantly more than we, I'm sorry, 553 city council meeting views in the entire quarter. 475 of those views were of the May 6th meeting. We thought that was interesting and noteworthy. We're seeing a continued increase in Facebook fans, up to 796 folks, which is a 10% increase from the first quarter. Our Twitter followers continue to increase, 22% over the first quarter. Human Resources, even without a full-time human resources director, has continued to be a very productive department. Because of the comings and goings in our organization, our folks processed over 1,000 job applications in the second quarter, and we hired 64 employees to work for the city in the second quarter. Eight of those were full-time, and 56 of those were part-time seasonal positions. We also started the recruiting process for an additional 15 positions. These aren't new positions, these are 15 vacancies within the organization. Our clerks division approved the ward redistricting process. We did distribute an updated map to you tonight to make sure you have good, accurate information, and that process was all done in accordance with the 2010 census. And something you may not know is we are, we actually maintain contracts, ordinances, and resolutions in both an electronic format and in paper. Our information technology department, we really treat our network facilities as second nature, but they're incredibly important to our ability to operate, and our network availability was 99.4%, and our internet connectivity was at 99.9%. Those are incredibly important to allow us to continue functioning at maximum efficiency on a daily basis. Something I did not know until I saw these figures regarding internet and email filtering. We certainly noticed when those things aren't functioning, because we get all of that email in our inbox, but I had no idea how much those systems catch. Over 63 million internet transactions were screened, with 950 of those transactions blocked as due to the possibility that they might be dangerous. What I found most amazing, over 2.7 emails were filtered for spam, and nearly 2.5 million of these were blocked. So of 2.7 emails that were filtered, almost all of those were blocked because they were spam. So extremely important. And then finally, we used to provide a separate quarterly financial update, and now we're including that as part of this process. You will see that our general fund revenue continues to trail our expenditures by just a bit. Our revenues in the second quarter were just a little over $11 million. Our expenditures did exceed our revenues in the second quarter by $1.3 million. Some of our revenues do lag behind throughout the year, so certainly, we keep a very close eye on this, but it's not something that staff is particularly alarmed about. Almost $8 million of our second quarter revenue comes from sales and use tax. Property tax, on the other hand, only accounts for about $1 million in our revenue. So that's a very quick overview. Again, I'm extremely proud on a daily basis of the work that the staff here at the city does. Very committed group of individuals, and we believe strongly in the work plan concept, which is not only to commit to getting a lot of important work done, but then the need to report back to city council and the community on a regular basis. So we're happy to answer any questions about the information.
Great, thank you, Brian. Good update. Council members have questions or concerns with the presentation that you just heard? I'll start with Mr. Douglas.
Thank you for the presentation. That's a good overview of the second quarter, so appreciate that for all the departments out there.
Ms. Elliott?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. I just want to commend staff on the presentation. It was very well user-friendly, I guess is what I want to say. The way it was broke down in just different segments, that was really easy to understand, so thank you.
Mr. McAdonie?
Thanks, I will echo those comments. I think I made similar comments last time we saw this format. This is great. I think seeing the three documents together, the work plan, the update, and then the overall summary is excellent. It looks really slick and easy, and it's nice to move through for us. I know it's not easy to get the information into that format, but what a great way for us to be able to move through a really meaningful update on each of the departments, and my thanks. I mean, in my time on council, these have been, these are just getting better and better, so I really appreciate that.
Mr. Amador?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Mr. Teeter?
Same here, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carson?
No, but thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Benson? No? Mr. Bullock?
I just want to thank Brian and staff for the update. It was a very concise update, and I want to thank you and staff for the work that you put into it. And just like Mr. McAdonie said, it has become so much easier to accept this, all this information when you have it right there in front of you and you're able to just pull it out. Thank you so much.
I would agree. I think it was a lot easier to digest, the new format. Looks like that all the departments continue to stay busy and a rise in several of those departments. I did want to ask, what was the increase for the viewing on the council meeting? What was the agenda item that caused that?
We don't know for sure. Staff thinks it's the first quarter update that we presented on May 6th.
Good, that means there'd be a lot of people watching tonight.
It could very well be. Now, those are views after we posted online.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So we're not, we're not sure why the high number.
I didn't know if it was a contentious chip seal or something happening.
No, we don't, we look back, there was nothing contentious, it wasn't a long meeting, so we're not quite sure why.
Good, at least we have viewers and the residents are being able to stay informed. So thank you to all the departments and keep up the good work.
Mr. Amador?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Mr. Teeter?
Same here, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carson?
No, but thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Benson? Mr. Boig?
I just want to thank Brian and staff for the update. It was a very concise update, and I want to thank you and staff for the work that you put into it. And just like Mr. McAdonny said, it has become so much easier to accept this, all this information when you have it right there in front of you and you're able to just pull it out. Thank you so much.
I would agree. I think it was a lot easier to digest, the new format. Looks like that all the departments continue to stay busy and a rise in several of those departments. I did want to ask, what was the increase for the viewing on the council meeting? What was the agenda item that caused that?
We don't know for sure. Staff thinks it's the first-quarter update that we presented on the 6th.
That means there'd be a lot of people watching tonight.
It could very well be. Now, those are views after we posted online.
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
So we're not sure why the high number.
All right, I didn't know if it was a contentious chip seal or something happening.
No, we don't, we look back, there was nothing contentious, it wasn't a long meeting, so we're not quite sure why.
Good, at least we have viewers and the residents are being able to stay informed. So thank you to all the departments and keep up the good work. Thanks for the presentation. Move into Community Development Budget Presentation. If Mr. Kramer would like to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to let the council know that, as you know, I submit my reports separately.
Right.
But it might be helpful and advisable if I included my report along with the City Manager's report, so you have it all the same evening rather than just have a written summary. Is there some feeling from the council?
I think that would be fine, I think it would be helpful. It's timely, and I think while we're engaged in getting these reports, I think that would work fine. Does any council members have any concern with receiving Bob's report in that manner? Mr. McAdonny?
No concern. I think it would be nice to see it folded into that report overall. Yeah, that would be great.
We'll arrange that for the next time, then. Great, thank you. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, Mr. McBroom?
Just by way of introduction to tonight's budget presentations, we have a series of budget presentations from the departments and sometimes divisions within the organization as really introductory and overview information for City Council leading up to the budget retreat on August 26th. The first department presentation was at the last study session. That was from Parks and Recreation Director Carolyn Keith. So tonight we have Community Development, Public Safety, and Public Works, and then several more next week on the 12th, and we wrap up on the 19th.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kramer, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here before you discussing the budget for Community Development. As Mr. McBroom laid out, you've already seen some department budget overviews, and I think comparatively speaking, Community Development has less moving parts than some other departments. So in some ways, they'll be, it'll be simpler and maybe a little quicker as well. So just starting out, again, this is the same format that council's seen with all the other departments, so the format should look familiar. The Personnel Services, which is the overall, the salaries and some of the benefits that go into that, and you can see a small uptick there. The Materials and Supplies, you'll see a small increase primarily due to some safety equipment that we need to purchase for some people in the field as a result, I believe, of the Ask Me contract. It's a pretty minor increase. We'd already had a decent safety equipment budget, but there were a couple of extra items that needed to be added to that. The Services and Charges increase of 780, and that's also especially compared to the overall budget line item, it's a relatively small increase. I believe some of that is due to the payments required as a result of council action for some of our board and commission member alternates to attend. And then we obviously don't have a capital outlay like some other departments do, so that's, you see the NA there. We have no anything, really, no new capital equipment requests. We're traditionally not a huge capital equipment request department anyway, so that's not that unexpected. No special considerations, no new budget, or no new position requests, no budget enhancements or reductions, and then no CIP projects. Which means that this sheet that you've seen before is extremely simple, because there's nothing on there. Just so, some of the key initiatives that might come through, or that don't necessarily pop out from a budget perspective, that as we move into the next year, though, obviously have budget implications. These are a few key initiatives that we're doing. We are implementing an online permitting process for a few selected building permits. It is not a Lexus, if you will, with all the bells and whistles, it's just a first step into that arena, but in an effort to continue to provide better customer service, especially for contractors and builders who have a lot of repeat permits, they've indicated they're going to especially appreciate that effort. We obviously, through the Planning Division and the Building Division, are going to have a lot of opportunities to focus on redevelopment projects in the city, and these are obviously things that council hears about often and gets updates about, the Derby project, the Derby Neighborhood, the Dog Track project. We're middle of the way through a stationary planning project, and then once that plan is complete, we'll start thinking about implementation of some of the recommendations in that plan. So a lot of the redevelopment initiatives that are underway is going to be a huge priority for Community Development in 2014. The Housing Authority, which the services there are incorporated in the Community Development Department, they also are going to be moving forward in 2014 as they work to finalize some of their plans for the vacant Conter parcel that they had purchased last year. And then, as Mr. McBroom noted earlier, there is, the growth and perm activity is increasing. It's not a revolution per se or overwhelming thing, but it is definitely continuing that steady pace upward, and we, a lot of the work that Community Development has been doing over the past few years has really been preparing for this, improving our processes, our development review process, ensuring that, you know, our comprehensive plan is up to date, that our zoning ordinances are up to date, the building, the new building codes have been adopted. So in a lot of ways, we are sort of ready to tackle these increased building permit and land use case numbers. So as I mentioned, it's a relatively simple budget presentation, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Any of the council members have any questions or comments for the Planning Director? Seeing none, Chris, I would like to thank you for the time and effort, and it's always nice to see that your budget is still solid so that we can stay conservative and try to keep our expenses down.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McBroom, do you want to invite the chief up?
Yes, I believe the chief is here, yes? Police Department's budget presentation will not be quite as simple as the Community Development Department's budget presentation.
Put a set up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council.
We're gonna, if we can, switch the order. The Police Department budget presentation hasn't been loaded on this laptop yet, so let's, if, no objection from council, if we can switch and do Public Works next, then by the time Public Works is done, we'll have the Police Department's presentation loaded.
No problem. I think that it's important to note, though, that the chief has been here longer than Maria, and, you know, you're throwing her to the fire. You know, chief, that you're going to have a longer budget presentation, and you don't have it loaded? That's correct, sir. You must be busy. I'll let you have a break this time. Thank you. Thank you. We'll have Maria, will please come forward, we'll have her do her Public Works Department budget presentation.
So thank you for your patience, and this is, of course, Maria DeAndrea, our still relatively new Public Works Director.
Good evening.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight to come and present before you. As City Manager McBroom mentioned, I am relatively still new to the department, so actually going through this process has been a learning experience for me, and I hope to be able to answer any questions that you might have as I give you this overview of our budget for the next year. So just an overview in terms of personnel, materials, are relatively minor increases in those two areas, primarily due to some cost increases in some areas as well as some decreases, so the net effect is relatively minor in those two areas. In terms of services and charges, the increase there is due primarily to two different items, which we'll discuss a little bit more in detail in the, further in the presentation, but is primarily due to an increase in garbage service as well as electrical and repair costs related to street lighting. And then the capital outlay, you can see that's a significant aspect of our overall department budget. And primarily what that is, is the fleet replacement that we do each year. So of that, 1.289 million for 2014, approximately 1,075,000 is for fleet replacement, and that includes 23 vehicles and one motorcycle. So the decrease from 2013 was just that there were fewer vehicles that were determined to be needed for replacement in 2014 as compared to 2013. And so overall, the net effect there is relatively minor at $1,600. Again, as I just mentioned, the significant line item variances are due first for an increase in streetlight utilities, and so as we've discussed in a previous study session, there have been more knockdowns of the streetlights, and the costs associated with those are absorbed with in our budget. So if we aren't able to recover those costs through a hit-and-run situation, or where we have information on the driver that hit that, then those costs are taken over by the city. And then we do anticipate some small increase in lighting or electrical service as well. And then also for increase in trash and recycling services, again, we will be adding new homes throughout the year, new connections, and so that increase is reflective of the number of new connections that we anticipate in 2014. Overall, there's no new positions, no special considerations. We are asking for two items. One is a budget enhancement of $10,000 for regulatory signs. There are requirements from the Federal Highway Administration to upgrade the types of signs, the retroreflectivity, so when your headlights hit the different street signs, there's certain levels that have to be maintained for safety, and so there's a multi-year process that we're following to implement that in accordance with Federal Highway Administration. And then also $5,000 for a weed spraying tank. This is basically just a larger tank so that we can be more efficient and more effective when we do go out and do the weed spraying. Some of our CIPP requests for this year, we are doing pavement management again, anticipating $500,000. In the next, the few next coming months up here, we are going to be planning to do some internal discussions as far as what types of efforts we undertake, whether that's crack sealing, chip sealing, mill and overlay, different types of things, and really trying to identify when to do the right treatment on the right roads at the right time. So all those three factors working together, and we want to do some internal discussions with our street maintenance staff, get them more involved in the process, to really identify where's the biggest bang for our buck. We will be also doing some crack sealing of our concrete pavements, so again, to prevent water infiltration into that sublayer below the pavement, it's important to seal those cracks. We are also planning to do some sidewalk repairs and curb and gutter. So to maintain what we already have out in the system, we're going to be leveraging some of our general fund dollars, here you see $100,000 from the general fund against our Community Development Block grant that we get through Adams County. And so we'll be using the $100,000 primarily for the right-of-way that's needed to build those remaining sidewalk connections. Typically, it's areas where we might not have all the right-of-way that we need to build those sidewalks. So the CDVG grants don't pay for that, they just pay for the actual construction. So using that to kind of work with those grant funds to get the most, again, bang for our buck. And then finally, using the transportation tax dollars, we're going to be paying some money to Adams County to participate in the DuPont neighborhood improvements that they're working, that they're completing. And then finally, the Highway 2 shouldering is our CDOT ramp project, and the $533,000 that's shown there is our 20% match. If we are to get, if we do get the CDOT ramp project funded through CDOT, they would pay 80%. We would be paying 20%, and this is reflective of that 20% cost. So some key initiatives for this upcoming year, again, working on the highway turnback or devolution, if you will, from CDOT with the two ramp projects that we have in place. We should be hearing from them probably in September or October as to whether those applications are going to be successful or not. Then, again, working with CDOT on the winter snow removal on Long Highway 2. And then finally, as I previously mentioned, doing an overview and really some further analysis into our entire pavement management program. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, council. Do you have any comments or concerns to bring forward on the budget presentation from Maria? Mr. Douglas?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I brought up different choices as far as you guys want to talk about in the future, which does sound good. I'm still hearing some streets out there that have cracks that you put your fist down, and if we can look at that as far as option two, you know, as far as taking care of those, it'd be great, because we had a tremendous rainstorm on Saturday, and had a lot of calls. People went out there watching, that water just go in, and just continued to flow in and nothing flowed on to the side, so it must be penetrating much lower than anticipated.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that I think the types of cracks or the width of the cracks will certainly dictate some different methods of how we seal those up. Thank you.
Anyone else? I do have a couple of things that came to my attention while you were going through your budget presentation. One is, last year, I know there was a drive to try to get a vacuum truck to clean drains because of the new style of inlets that are in the northern area, and I wanted to know if that was in any of your vehicle allocations that are part of your budget plan before us this evening?
Though we're still finalizing all of the individual department budgets, at this point, it's not on the list.
Okay, well, I just, I know that was one of those things to keep, maintain our system that was necessary. The other thing that came to mind is, when you brought up crack sealing on the concrete roadways, after dealing with subgrades and what crack sealing does and what chip sealing does and all that kind of stuff, thinking about it, the planters and medians that are within our concrete roadways that are irrigated, how do we keep from having all that moisture from the irrigation, keep it from destroying the subgrade of the road? Because there's one point on 104th, down on the, closer to the Highway 2 end, where when they're being irrigated, you can actually, when you're driving, it pumps water up through the concrete of the road, and I would hate to be destroying a subgrade underneath of one of these costly concrete roadways. I don't notice it up on the east end of 104th, but I do notice it down on the, where it kind of drops down into the lower area when you get close to Highway 2. And just want to make sure, if we're putting medians with irrigation that can infiltrate that subgrade, is there a drainage issue there? What do we do to keep from destroying that road? And that pumping is one of those things that is of a concern when I see it happening.
And typically, and I'd have to check on the design for that specific area, but typically when you have an irrigated median, they'll install edge drains below the pavement, typically underneath that median concrete curb and gutter. So any water that does get down, it's infiltrating there and then running it out to the storm sewer system. But I'd, again, I'd have to check on that specific sign.
Right in that area, when the cars go by, you can just see the water come up through the cracks in that, in that particular area, and it's something that I think we should look into so that we don't. I know that's the area where we did a bunch of patching and fixing because of subgrade issues before. I just want to make sure that the proper drains are in place so that we don't create another subgrade issue for lack of attention. Mr. McAdonny?
Just to add to those comments, I, and I'm glad you brought them up, I was heading west on 104th within the last couple of days and observed what appeared to be some issues with the irrigation. So I think it might be a combination of drain challenges, and we've got some issues where we're putting too much water down in some of those spots. I don't know if it's pieces of the system are broken and it's over-irrigating, but it seems as though there was significant flow as opposed to just overspray out onto the roadway in a couple of those sections. So I don't know if there's anything integral to the system that helps alert to sort of excessive flows or anything to that effect, but to me, it would be, never paid attention to that stuff before, but it's one of those things where you look at, you look at water bills for a metro district or for a city, and those things add up over time, so thank you.
Good comments. I think that's something that needs to be good coordination between Parks and Public Works to make sure that we're here. works to make sure that we're irrigating properly and that we're protecting that subgrade under those concrete roads because at the cost to the resident to install those, we want to make sure that we're managing them as best we can to get the most life we can out of them. So thank you, Maria. Otherwise, I don't have any other comments. As the council, have any other comments? Then we'll move forward. Thanks again.
Thank you.
If I could just ask a quick...
Go ahead, Brian, and then I'll go back to you.
Just a quick clarifying question. You might have mentioned, I just missed it. Do you have an approximate cross street where you're seeing that irrigation problem?
You know, it's in that Fontara to Highway 2 area. I don't recall where I, but when it's being irrigated, there seems like there's just an excess of water in there.
Is it near, I think it's near to North Range Village.
Right. And so before you get to Turnberry, and it just seems like it's pumping right there.
Not far from the North Forest property, just west of the North Forest property.
Exactly, right in that general area where North Forest is. You come down that hill and get to that spot, and it just, you can see the water coming through the road, through the expansion cracks, and you know if it's in, under the road that we're hurting the subgrade. And I just want to make sure that everything's right there so that we can take care of it. Okay?
Just my real quick extra question. You obviously showed the line item of $500,000 for pavement management, and I know we're going to have a discussion about technologies, et cetera. Obviously, last year, we had a little extra capital. We'd had some discussions about the fact that we're effectively behind in some respects in terms of pavement management based on ratings of certain roadways. Would be helpful when we get deeper into the budget cycle to have a sense of how far back we still are. Obviously, $500,000, I know from past discussions, isn't going to get us caught up. So how far behind are we so that if we do get to a point where we see that there's something we want to consider, we might be able to have in mind what those additional dollars that we might want to contribute to that end might be? Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else, we will move on to the Police Department budget presentation. Mr. Smith, are you ready now?
I believe so.
Good.
You might need a quick moment to load it.
No problem.
Perhaps while he's loading that, I can just comment. We certainly understand the $500,000 for pavement management is not very much. What you'll see at the end of all the department budget presentations, I'll be presenting an overview of the entire budget. And the challenge we're still faced with is, based on a fairly conservative projection of revenues for next year, we're still seeing our expenses above projected revenues. And so capital improvements continue to be a challenge based on the need to maintain ongoing operations and services of the community. But that's something we can talk about in greater detail as part of the overall budget presentation on the 19th, and then certainly as part of the budget retreat on the 26th.
We'll give this a try again. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Troy Smith, Chief of Police, here to present the 2014 budget for the Police Department. And the first slide is our department summary. You will see that in Personnel Services, there is an increase there of almost 3%. A good majority of that expense is related to our predicted salary and FICA benefit increases from both ASME and the FOP contract. We also made some large reductions in overtime, and part of our reorganization will be moving some employees from a salaried position where they are non-exempt to an exempt position where they won't earn overtime dollars. So there's some of that kind of movement as a result of our reorganization that's in there as well. Some materials and supplies, a very modest increase there. Services and charges, that cost is largely due to an accounting procedural change to add the cost of the red light camera into our budget. And then there'll be offsetting revenue that will be posted against that in the general fund of the city's budget. That wasn't done in years past, and so this is a procedural change to place that charge in this line item. No capital expense requests in 2014. I would mention that the $61,000 is an accrual replacement fund for our mobile computers and our police cars. We've moved that fund into the IT budget. We think that's the best place to manage that IT-related expense. And so when you see John Howard's budget presentation, you'll note that that capital request to continue that fund for replacement is in his budget. In total, a $470,000 increase from 2013 to 2014, and primarily $419,000 of that $470 is made up of the red light camera and the increases, both in salary and benefit costs to the city. We do have some proposed new positions for the 2014 budget. Both school districts have asked us to increase our staffing of SROs to those districts by one position. And so this $69,000 is the 50% match of funding those positions in each of the two school districts. The one position will fund 50% of the position at Prairie View High School, which we completed last year and saw about 40% reduction in reports of crime at that school. And we think it's been a tremendous partnership between us and the City of Brighton and the school district, and we've had quite an impact on the students at that school, the large majority of whom are residents of our city. The SRO in District 14 would be dedicated to assisting with our charter schools and the 14 elementary schools that are in the city. We will have an SRO assigned at each middle school and each high school at the start of this school year and hope to continue the SRO program and its strength moving forward. The second position is a digital forensic analyst. And as you might imagine, virtually every incident that we respond to now has some sort of electronic device associated with it, whether that be a tablet, a PDA, a smartphone. And all of those devices contain evidence related to the crimes that we're investigating. And we have a very limited capacity today in the organization to extract that evidence from the phone. Most often, those devices are sent out to the state's crime lab, and we wait in line with all the other agencies who submit. This position would be trained to extract that evidence from these devices as we investigate those crimes. And this would be the first position in the department that would have that level of expertise. And it's really an emerging trend that we're seeing on a lot of our incidents, and so we think it's a great time to move forward with that. The final position that you see here is an additional detective. We have eight detectives in our department, and right now, one of them, as an ad hoc assignment, does our registered sex offenders. And this position would be dedicated to investigating, following up, and assisting in the process of the criminal justice system of managing registered sex offenders. The State of Colorado Sex Offender Management Board on their website states that there is no cure for sex offender, and that the most effective means to ensure safety in your community is to actively engage in managing and treating sex offenders. And we are a very important part of that management process whereby those folks come in and register with us, and then it's my intent to have us be following up, doing address verifications, regular home visits with those folks to ensure they're in compliance with the orders of the judge. And today, we're not able to do any of that. We do the registration process, and we do a few, couple of audits throughout the course of the year to ensure that people are complying, but really is up to the individual to comply with that court order at this point in time. So this would be an increase in our service in that area and one that we think really directly impacts our community safety. As a result of our reorganization efforts this year, we believe that we will have some new people in command positions and supervisory positions in 2014. And so one of the enhancements we've requested is some additional training for the management team and for those supervisors that will be coming into the organization. Our cell phone and cellular services for both iPads and cell phones are increasing this year from our service provider and that $32,000 request in those fees. Some critical incident debriefing facilitation when officers are involved in critical incidents. We would like to bring a trained psychologist or psychiatrist individual into the organization to conduct debriefs with our staff. There is undercover leased vehicle that was provided by one of the task forces that we were involved in previously, and their grant funding has been reduced, and they're no longer providing vehicles for any of the staff members assigned to the EMAT task force who will be responsible for our assigned detective vehicle there starting next year. Some additional funds for recruitment and selection in the department. Again, as we move through next year, I believe we will have vacancies in the organization that need to be filled, and this is some money for printing of materials and testing and some other things that allow us to bring additional officers on. And then finally, the department hasn't budgeted historically for turnover in terms of uniforms and equipment, and this line item would reflect a 10% increase in our staffing by virtue of turnover, not new positions. And those dollars would pay for the equipment that each officer is assigned. Much of that equipment can't be reused, bulletproof vests are custom fit for the officers, et Few other items, our TASER program, an increase in that to replace some of the personally purchased equipment that officers are carrying and to convert that to department-issued A few OC and specialty munitions for our SWAT team to replace some that we've expended during this year. Canine care, that's veterinary care that previously has been given to us in kind, and we're budgeting for that in the future and hope to continue the great care that animals have gotten, but think it's our responsibility to pay for those services. And then finally, dictation service. And this request largely comes from our officers in the department who currently type their reports. They come off the street into the station primarily to write those reports, and this service would be a phone-in dictation service with a 24-hour turnaround so that officers could telephone in their reports, and they would be transcribed and given back to them. I think this would really increase the time we keep officers in the field as opposed to pulling them off the streets for these administrative duties. The amount of money that's in this line item is really to run a test, to see how many officers would use that service and what those kinds of services might look like. And then finally, our key initiatives. This really, we've undertaken this year an organizational transformation, and we've really been focused as a staff on rebuilding the culture of the organization. And that's culminated in a project to restructure the organization and to focus us on the future. And our goal here through this restructuring is to build work teams that are empowered to get the work done in our organization that needs to get done. And so it's been a very exciting year for us as we've been planning for this transformation, which actually culminates in some testing for management positions next week. And we're really excited to see how that process unfolds. Some of the future opportunities that we're looking at as an organization certainly is the advent of a new professional standards unit in the department that will really be focused on how we continue to improve our services to the community and how we police ourselves through a function of being transparent with citizen complaints and investigating those kinds of complaints ourselves. 2014 is largely going to be a year of analysis where we begin to look at the functions and units in our department and how they're operating, and making decisions about resources, how we're using those resources, and really trying to determine what's the greatest value that we're delivering for our citizens based on the services we're delivering. Finally, we have a transformation process going on in our evidence area, and we've hired back retired Sergeant Mark Micklejohn to come in and help us rebuild our evidence process and take a look at how we disposition our evidence cases in a way that has us storing and keeping the things we need to, but getting rid of those things that we don't. We've currently outgrown the facility that we have here for storing evidence. We have off-site storage at Public Works, and we're working through a good deal of those issues to try to minimize the amount of storage that we have outside of this building. And that brings me to the final piece on my presentation here, which is we're constantly thinking about our facilities and how growth might impact our operations moving forward. We are at capacity in our building, and as we continue to look at a growing community, I think it's important that we keep in our minds and forefront that facilities for both evidence processing and serving the public are going to be something that we will need to continue to plan and be thoughtful about moving forward. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Chief. Good presentation. Council, have any comments or questions? I'll go with Mr. Amador down here on this end.
First of all, Chief, I want to thank you for your presentation, but your presentation really does show through your proposed budget and new positions and enhancement requests that you're not happy with the status quo of where you're at today and you're in tune with the department needs. So I would like to thank you for that and giving line-by-line items to show exactly what your requests are. So, good job.
Thank you. Mr. Teter?
Thank you, Chief. I didn't see anything out here about the beds with the Sheriff's Department. We're having a problem with our overload.
The jail issue?
Right.
I believe that's accounted for in the city manager's budget.
Courts, that was part of the courts. That'll be in the courts, part of the, through the city manager.
We have actually budgeted money. At one time, Adams County had indicated they were going to charge us for any prisoners we lodged in the county jail above our cap. Although we've budgeted those funds, we haven't actually been charged. It is possible through the ultimate resolution, at least over the short term, that we may need to house prisoners in other jails. If that's the case, we will determine at that time if we need to budget funds for it. Right now, we're not anticipating that we're going to need to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Council McCarthy?
Chief, thank you for the presentation and the picture. That was a beautiful picture. But anyway, I just wanted to say I am so happy to see this SRO budget and keep up the good work because it actually, I mean, you've got the proof right there when you told us there was a 40% reduction in crime. Keep investing in our kids. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Vincent?
Yeah, just a comment. We're using up $8,000 of tasers. I guess it's better than bullets. It's good. I mean, we're doing it with a taser instead of a hard object.
Actually, that's part of a plan that we have been building in grant funds and in city council budgeted funds to redo our entire TASER program. At the time tasers were implemented in the department, they were not mandatory carry. In other words, not every officer has to have that piece of equipment issued to them, and not every officer has to carry them. And that creates some issues with police operations when you have one officer that may not know how to use a taser, needing to take a taser off of an officer in a struggle and use it. So it's our intention to have all the equipment that is in the field be issued and purchased by the department, which we feel is a very reasonable request, and to have every officer go through this training mandatorily so that they can assist each other and know exactly how each other's equipment works in the field. I think that's going to bring a great deal of safety to the officers out in the field.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Chief, for your budget presentation. I know last year, you talked about police license plate scanners. How's that equipment working out for the Police Department?
We have the ALPR automated license plate reader equipment. We deploy that in the field on a fairly regular basis. You might have noticed that the ACLU several weeks ago released a report, and the cities of Aurora and Commerce City... of Aurora and Commerce City from Colorado were highlighted in the national report that the ACLU did. That data is incredibly useful to us in solving crimes, there are countless cases across the metro area where we've been able to place a suspect in the location of a crime as a result of having that data collection. We keep that data secured, we don't use it for anything but investigative purposes, and it would be a significant deficit to us if we were to lose the ability to collect and store that data.
Okay, thank you.
Counselwoman Elliott?
I don't have anything, Chief, I just want to commend you for all the hard work that you've done, and I want to thank you for your presentation. I actually really just got a kick out of seeing the $1,000 for the canine healthcare, I just thought that was nice that you broke everything down and very, you know, very good explanations behind each category, so that's all, I just wanted to commend you.
Thank you.
Mr. McElhaney?
Thank you, and thank you, Chief. I, again, a very thorough update, you know, looking through the updates and kind of taking them in a whole, it's really clear through these updates that the actions that you're taking within the department and the evolution that we're seeing take place within the department, so I really appreciate your leadership, and it's through these little line items that it's very clear the insight and the consideration that you and your staff are putting into caring for our community, from the changes in the need for additional staffing, from the forensics functions to the additional SROs, I mean, I think that's obviously a huge one, I know Counselwoman Carson cited that earlier. The other thing that I caught in your update, and it's certainly been in front of us in the years past, is this question of growth and capacity. It's so hard to think that a building that we literally opened, as Mr. Benson and I were coming on to counsel, as the mayor was last leaving, is already at capacity in so many respects, I mean, that's just mind-blowing about our growth, and so I appreciate you putting that back in front of us because it is critical that we talk about, that I know that when we did our budget retreat earlier this year, we talked at very high levels about what those dollars and cents might look like in order to expand that capacity, so I really am interested in hearing your thoughts on what that might look like. It sounds like you're giving thought to how we, I mean, literally the amount of things that we need to keep in evidence and where we can keep them in evidence, so I get that you're looking at all the angles, but I want to make sure that we, as a counselor, really understanding the need and the urgency of that need so that we can be planning appropriately and not find ourselves in a predicament at some point, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I just want to echo all the comments the rest of the council made, and thank you for your presentation, and knowing that police work is probably the most dangerous work that you can do even when you aren't involved in a takedown or something, just chasing somebody can actually injure you. If you're running at night and don't know the terrain and everything, I just want to thank you and all your officers for everything that they do for us, thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, I have a few things that I wanted to mention. First and foremost, since bringing you aboard, I have had nothing but and continued positive response about the work you're doing here at Commerce City, and I think you need to know that. You know, this council was getting visited by officers on a regular basis about concerns within the department, about how things are going, what are we going to do to fix it, and I have to tell you, I'm not getting those phone calls, I'm not getting those officers here waiting to talk to the council afterwards because they're uncomfortable with how things are going. So that says a lot for the efforts that you've put into your first year and the reorganization of the department, but even above and beyond that, other jurisdictions, when I run into Chief from Aurora, Brighton, Thor, and it doesn't matter, they always tend to say, you know what, you really picked a good guy, he's going to work out well for you, I know him personally, and as I mentioned to you the other day, I ran into one of your colleagues from your drug task force days, and he had nothing but positive things to say, that Commerce City is going down the right path. So keep up the good work, as long as we're not receiving those complaints, I know your officers are feeling comfortable under your watch, and I have to tell you that I'm thankful that you're here, and I want to thank the officers that were going through some trials and tribulations, thank you for sticking around and bearing with us, and, you know, as we address those problems and get things taken care of, I think it just moves our community forward, and public safety is one of those departments that we can't falter, we have to make sure we have good officers, I think we have some of the best in the nation that are working here at Commerce City, and I want you to take care of them and continue the good work. So thank you for your presentation. I do want to mention Rotary this Wednesday, the presentation is going to be Doug Dar, and he will be in front of the Rotary talking about the jail issues and where they're at and the county, his perspective of it, and because of the issues that we've been having with limited availability at the jails, I just thought it would be interesting for council members and/or staff members that if any of the council or any of the staff or, and I would like to see if, Bob, you could pass this on to Judge Juarez, if any of the folks involved with how that's working would like to be my guest, I would gladly take them to Rotary this week so that they could hear that presentation because I'm hoping that it's enlightening for all of us. So just figured since it was mentioned, it'd be a good segue for me to make that invitation. Mr. McElhaney, have something further?
Just one last piece, Ms. Carson obviously commented on the photo that you selected for the front of your presentation, great image, who gets the photo credit?
Commander Munoz is our family photographer, so...
Well, please pass along our kudos on the image, and it reminded me of, my wife and I, my wife and my daughter and I brought my mother-in-law who was in town to the Rapids game a couple weeks back when the honor guard was present for the opening ceremonies of the game, and they did a great job, they looked excellent, so please pass along my appreciation.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation.
I'm probably out of order, but if I could make one comment, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate very much all of your thanks and well wishes and et cetera for my leadership coming to the organization, but I've got to echo what the mayor said, this isn't about me, this is a great police department, and we have fantastic employees, we've got a great management team, and this department is headed in the right direction and is capable of very, very good things, and it was about getting us oriented on the future, and we've been able to do that thanks to the work of the wonderful employees that we have, so you should feel very comfortable that this community is in good hands and has a whole group of people who's dedicated their lives to ensuring the safety of this community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on in the agenda to administrative council business. I will start with Mr. Amador, you have something for us this evening?
I do, I have had communications with one of our residents, Pam Sprattler, in talking with the city manager on our one-on-ones. There have been some requests of her and also through the city and the communication, so I believe those things have been happening. I received a letter today in my envelope dated July 15th, so I'm not real sure today's August 5th, which was about 20 days ago, so I'm not sure if the letter ended up, how it got to me, but it got to me today, and some of the items that we've talked about, at least myself and Brian and the citizen, are in here, and so I, short of having all these items talked about right here in public, I would like to give the letter to the city manager so that he can address that. Also, on a different subject, I did notice yesterday, again, at the intersection where the camera lights are at, there was a individual light on the pole that is on the highway side, so it's on the, not the windy side, so on the west, let's see, the southwest corner, there was a light that was knocked over, but it was still attached to the pole, and when, all the lights are green and this one is red, and it was, looks like it was hit by a truck, probably a big truck, and then when it tipped over, it angled itself to some odd angle, and I couldn't even tell which way was red and to go or not go, so maybe if we could check that out. And I did drive by there today, and I just, it blanked my mind, but hopefully we got that taken care of. And what was the last one? Oh, also, in front of the dog track, right there along Highway 85, there's about six to eight, not stoplights, but overhead lights, I'm drawing a blank here, but they seem to go down and they're out, so there's a really dark strip of highway right on the western edge of the dog track, that just seems like it goes out and it stays out, or it's on and then it's out, so I'm not real sure what's going on with that. So that's what I have for my portion, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Teeter, you have any administrative business this evening?
Yes, I would just like to verbally invite everybody to get out this week and enjoy these QCI meetings. People up here are looking real forward to communicating with you and explaining this budget issue that we've got coming up here, this ballot issue, and I personally want to invite everyone to come out and come to these meetings and give us your input and learn about what really is on our minds up here. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel McCarthy, do you have anything? Mr. Benson, do you have anything for us this evening?
Mr. McElhaney, are you still our EMAT representative?
AM, meeting is canceled this month.
Okay, but you're making it to all those meetings?
Those that have been scheduled, the last several have been canceled.
Okay. I've got to make sure that they know that, because I'm not sure, anyway, I'll take care of that.
I'm in regular correspondence with Connie, so...
I'm sorry?
I'm in regular correspondence with Connie Garcia, so...
Okay, okay, good.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I've been seeing on occasion cars driving down the trail, trailhead next to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Refuge. They're just getting along, I guess, on the side of where the school is, and they're just going all, just falling all the way around up until like 88th, and then they're not stopping because there's no light for them to get across there because it's a three-way, not a four-way, and then they're just, they're dodging traffic, they're just shooting across the traffic, cars coming, there's been some close calls, and this happened several occasions, not just once. I know one other time was after the Fourth of July Fest, I'd called on that, and, you know, of course, you know, you've seen this, it wasn't just one car, there were several cars traveling along there, and I see folks riding their bikes and walking there when we leave here for the council, I mean, that is, that trail is used a lot at night. Then the other thing is on 70, 90 East 60th Place, Commerce City, talked to residents over there and next to their home, there's multiple use of this home, several different cars parked out front, they say it's a frat house, and constant people constantly coming in and out of that home, could be maybe drug use in the house or so, but if we could maybe monitor area, because there's, I know there's been reports of this by Counselman Teeter, and so what they'll do is they'll move their cars and everything, but then they'll think things are okay, they go back to what they were doing. So I think we could, I don't know, somehow put some pressure on it or so, or just maybe, I'm not sure how we can go about that, but we need to draw some attention to that address.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Douglas, could you tell me the location again?
It's 70, 90 East 60th Place.
East 60th, okay, thank you.
Okay, and I was going to ask counsel, there's a leadership summit, last year I couldn't attend because of numerous conflicts. This year, I do have the time to do the leadership summit, and I also did apply for a leadership scholarship, and there were several applicants that had applied also, and I was awarded a, I was one of the recipients that received a scholarship to help with the cost of this, and, you know, this would help me in my role as a council member through leadership and different abilities and strengthen my knowledge here. As you know, when you take this seat, you only gain that knowledge by engaging and going out and seeking those opportunities to strengthen your mind, so I'm asking the consent of the council for approval to go to this 21st Annual Leadership Summit.
Okay, I see here, Mr. Douglas, you have utilized funds from legislative budget, is that appropriate location for this money to come from, Mr. Galer?
Yes.
Okay, first, I want to tell you, thank you for considering the grant opportunities and trying to reduce the cost, I think that that's, that was appropriate, and I thank you for taking that extra step and preparing your essay, but before I ask the council to consider yours, I noticed that Mr. Bullock also has requested to go to this, where's it at on here?
Savannah.
Savannah, Georgia, for this program. I think that if the council's okay with it, that we would consider both of them at the same time, unless there's a concern with considering them both. Counselwoman Carson, you have a concern?
I do, we recently had received the report from the city manager's office updating us on our travel expenses. We still have an upcoming trip to NLC, and when I look at the total budget that we have in our account and where we're at, NLC barely fits in there, because you have to figure about $3,000 per counselor if you're going to take a trip like that. When I look at NLC in Washington, most of them were over the $3,000 mark, there's not enough money. If all nine of us choose to go, there really isn't going to be enough money for NLC, we will be over our budget. So I think it's time that this council started taking a better look at the budget. With us being so far over that mark, we have a council member who has spent nothing, two council members who have spent less than $2,000, and we're still at that expense already. So when I look at this, I can see that Mr. Bullock's trip has already been budgeted in, but Mr. Douglas sure as hasn't, and so, like I said, if everybody would go to that report and come down here to the ending numbers, I don't know how we approve that and then run out of money, so it takes away, and we've already paid our charges to NLC, and we will be over our budget. And we are asking every department in this city to stay within a budget, to be very conservative with their budget, and I think we need to do the same.
Okay, anyone else? I too read the budget in depth, Ms. Carson. I know that there are several council members that have utilized the opportunity to get training, as well as those members who are members of the different boards that meet for NLC and CML and different activities that they've taken on that are above and beyond their role here at council. So, and, you know, I'm going to be supportive of both, and because number one, Mr. Bullock is a member, number two, I think that it's, I was impressed with the fact that Mr. Douglas went outside to apply for grants and take the incentive, and I want the council to have the opportunity to have the training and to bring back the information to the, to help our community forward. If there needs to be additional funds, then we need to look at that, but I think that if they're getting the training and the money's going to good use and positive information to come back to this community on how we can better do our job, I think... information to come back to this community on how we can better do our job, I think that that's appropriate. I know last year I didn't use any of my discretionary funds. If any, it was for a dinner here or there, for an event local. And I'm willing to take a relook at that, because I'm not going to exhaust my discretionary funds this year, and it could be beneficial to training for other council members. So with that said, that's just how I feel. I think that we need good-trained members of the council. Is there any other discussion that needs to take place before I call for a vote? Mr. McElhany?
I think just to sort of take a position between both yourself and Ms. Carson, we've set a budget amount for travel. So long as we stay within that amount, and others that are not going to use those dollars are going to willingly not use those dollars, then I'm fine. But I'm not open to us exceeding the planned amount for this, especially in light of comments that were just made by the city manager moments ago about the disconnect between revenue and expenditure year-to-date and the trajectory that we're on. For us to take this micro example within our legislative budget, even if it's a couple thousand dollars here or there, it, to me, sends the wrong picture. And I'll just tie it back to the earlier comments from the city manager's update about the viewership for our meeting when the first quarter update occurred. I have a suspicion that those are employees looking to see how we responded to the first quarter activity. So I think it's important to realize that there are eyes and ears beyond our citizenry, the people that support us every day that are watching. And so if we sit here and on one hand talk about, we don't have as much to do with what we want to do management with, or otherwise, I just hate to get into the cycle of continually coming back to the travel dollars. It's a chapter that I felt was closed. So if we've budgeted a fixed amount and we can buy projection, hold within that amount through end of year, great. Otherwise, it should be a nonstarter.
Yeah. So, thank you. Okay, then I've got two. Now, I asked, do you want to separate these? Do you want to do them together? I didn't hear any comments on doing one versus the other. Do you want one vote on both, or do you want to separate them? Mr. McBroom?
Just a point of clarification. We did, and I think council members were probably referring to that information, Ms. Gallegos sent out, I think it was last week, those expense totals. We budgeted $59,800 in city council travel. There is still just shy of $27,000 left in that account, and that would include estimated expenses, if I'm reading this correctly, and includes estimated expenses for Mr. Bullock's trip to Savannah. So it includes that amount. So in terms of the total budget for the entire council, there would seem to be money available. There's been this unofficial budgeted amount for each council member, but it would seem there's enough in the total aggregate amount.
Councilwoman Carson?
I just took the nine counselors times 3,000 for the NLC trip, because it seems like 3,000 is a fairly good number, and when you do that, you come up with 27,000 that we will be spending, and we don't have 27,000 in there.
Okay. Now, after hearing your comments, Mr. McBroom, do we need to vote on Mr. Bullock's trip because it was budgeted?
I'm unclear whether this was a required trip for Mr. Bullock's committee. I wasn't totally sure about that.
Can I come into that? Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Bullock.
At the time that it was budgeted and everything, we had a committee. From the remarks I got today, the committee has been dissolved. And that's one of the main reasons I want to go down to Savannah and find out, how did the LTC, which is the Leadership Training Council, get dissolved when we're still doing training and receiving quite a bit of revenue from training? Where is this money going? Because if I come back and tell council, there is a big disconnect between the money that we're sending into NLC for training and where training dollars are going to. Because I think the first person they should always tell when you've been fired from the job is the employee, you know? So if we aren't no longer a LTC, I should have been notified that the LTC has been dissolved. And they know I've sent it in, and I've been registered since back in April. Why wasn't I notified? And when we went to NLC in March, we were a committee. And so it just kind of strikes me as odd that all of a sudden that that committee's been dissolved. But I would, I would, in my opinion, I would say we'd vote on both of them together, because they're both the same thing, same conference. The only difference in the two is Mr. Douglas got the $395 scholarship that I didn't put in for. If there's any objections to voting for both the same, please let me know now.
Okay. I'll ask one more time. Mr. Galer, do you have something? Just one comment. This isn't a legal thing, obviously, but just hearing you talk, is it possible to determine at this point if some of you may not be going to NLC? And if so, then that solves the issue raised by Councilwoman J.D. Carson. Because if a couple or three of you aren't going, then you've got more than the 3,000 per person. Okay.
The dues for all the one individuals.
Mr. Benson?
I have a question. I have a question about the $3,000 figure. And we've got something like a $400 round-trip airfare. Hotel's going to be somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200, and the per diem's going to be between 350 and 400. That's about 2,000. But where does the other 1,000 come in?
I just was looking at what NLC in DC was, and it was almost well over 3,000 per person.
But how do you compute that?
If I can, please. I don't want to have a discussion between council members while we're seated as a body. I need to have the comments and questions expressed as a body to the audience or directed to staff.
Does anybody know how that 3,000 is computed? What's included?
Mr. McBroom?
Counsel's benefit. I think Ms. Carson's referring to the report that we sent out last week. It has itemized expenses for all of council's travel. And I agree with Ms. Carson, the average cost for council members who attended NLC in Washington, DC in March was about $3,000.
Okay.
And if you look at that report, it'll list out the itemized expenses, conference registration, flight costs, hotel, miscellaneous expenses. We've itemized it out for you.
Perfect. Mr. Benson, does that answer your question?
I'm looking here, and it says the hotel was 1731. I guess I didn't realize that our hotel was that much money.
That's Washington, DC, too.
I need to not have people jumping in. I need to make sure that the person who has the floor has the floor. And at this time, it's Mr. Benson. If you have a comment, you can raise your hand. I'll call on you, and you can engage after the floor has been given up. Mr. Benson?
I mean, we're staying like five nights for NLC, is that right? Is that correct, five nights?
I can actually check with Ms. Gallegos and Ms. Chavaria tomorrow. They may have begun estimating costs for the NLC fall trip. Again, Ms. Carson is assuming that the fall trip would be similar in cost to the March trip, although I think the fall trip would be a little bit less, fewer days. Several of you stayed. The DC trip was structured differently this year, which caused several of you to stay longer than you had in previous years. The NLC fall trip would likely be shorter stays for each of you.
You know, it looks to me like we're paying in DC over $300 a night. I think we ought to be able to do something about that. That's a lot. I didn't know we were, I thought we were paying something between 200 and 250. I know four years ago was like 150, but I know that was four years ago. But $1,700 for five nights.
That was the rate.
Maybe we need to find another place to stay. I don't know.
That's certainly something we can do, if council would like us to do that.
That's way too much money to be spending on a hotel.
Anything further, Mr. Benson?
No, except to suggest that we try to find a less expensive place to stay when we go to Washington, DC.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Okay. If we could get back to the question of Savannah, I understand Washington, DC has a lot, is a lot costlier than most cities. Washington and New York and San Francisco are the three most expensive places to stay in the United States. Even if we found another hotel, when you put in the cost of a taxi to go to and from, because our hotels were 259 a night, our rooms, and across the street at the other hotel that the conference was held, I think it was 279 a night. So when taxes and everything are added in, which in Washington, DC, they have a hotel tax and all these different taxes and fees they put on it, but that's not the discussion at hand. We know Seattle, Washington is a lot cheaper than Washington, DC, and the state's going to be a lot less. Three of us stayed out there for eight days in Washington, DC, instead of the regular four days that we're normally at a conference. So when you put all of these things in, if you remember everything that went on, apples and apples are not the same. We're talking about two different things, and I really know that it isn't going to cost us $3,000 to go to NLC in Seattle, Washington. And if it does, then we might have to reconsider not going. Thank you.
Is there anyone else before I go back to Mr. Benson? Mr. Benson?
Thanks for reminding me that we did stay there a lot longer than we normally do, like maybe seven nights and eight days. So that would account for $1,700. So thank you for clarifying that.
Before I, before I go ahead and bring this up for a vote, I would like to say that, again, I'm going to support both of the council members to go ahead and go. I will also step outside the box and say if our, that we will meet and maintain our budget that was, that was put forth to us, as Mr. McElhany has brought to our attention. And if we're that short on legislative funds, I will refrain from going to the NLC conference this fall to ensure that the counselors can have the training that they are pursuing. So with that said, I'll ask the council to, to put forth a motion, one way or the other, on these two requests. Mr. Amador?
I make a motion to approve the request for Savannah, Georgia, and the conference for Renee Bullock and Steve Douglas.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to allow both counselors who have brought forth requests this evening to go to Savannah, Georgia for training, to be allowed to go by use of the legislative budget. Any further discussion? Saying none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let the record reflect, there are eight ayes, one nay. The motion is passed, and we expect that the two of you will bring back significant information to let the residents know that their money was spent wisely by allowing you both to attend. Now, we can move on with administrative business. Mr. Douglas, was that the end of your administrative business request?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany?
I should have brought it up during the update by Public Works on the budget, but I seem to recall that I had brought a concern around the intersection of 120th and Buckley, and the vehicles turning northbound from 120th to Buckley. I was at the intersection this weekend and had multiple vehicles using that turn again. And regularly, anytime I'm coming back from that, or coming back on Buckley, especially during rush hours, I see it. I'll have to check my phone. I believe I was sitting at the light within about the last week, and two tractor-trailers used the shortcut. Not just the short shortcut on the corner, but literally the long cut across the property. So if we could just have staff reach out to that property owner and determine what together we can do, I mean, either it needs to get turned into a legitimate turn lane, or we need to put a couple of concrete barriers up so that it's not being used. I'm concerned that, you know, something's, something's going to happen, either somebody's going to be trying to shortcut that, and somebody's going to be using the, you know, the proper turn on the street, and they're going to, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like the way to have an intersection function. The other related concern in terms of traffic and turning is the properties that sit on Highway Two, just south of 104th. I believe those both are deemed still unincorporated Adams County. And there is a turn lane, I think there's a D cell lane northbound off of 104th into the one property. But I don't know how many folks find themselves behind a couple of large vehicles trying to turn into that, particularly during rush hour. And we end up with the exact same thing happening. We've got vehicles that then start using the shoulder on Highway Two to move around those vehicles. So to me, it's another opportunity for us to look at the engineering and the, you know, the fact that, yes, we have multiple jurisdictions that are at play here, but, you know, wear and tear on CDOT's road, safety concerns that we're going to end up responding to. So to me, it's another one of those intersections that if we could look with, look to the county to see what we might be able to do together, or the county and CDOT to see what we can do to come up with a solution at that point. I think it's literally just at the edge, or just past the edge of where we've improved that intersection, and so everything narrows back down again. But thank you for looking into those.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I have a few items. Anybody traveling west on 62nd Avenue, when you get to Holly Street now, because of the sight distance that you can see around those bushes, is a no-turn-on-red sign. So I would like to advise people that have been used to turning red off of 62nd onto Holly, that it's now illegal. Second thing, Rosemary Street on weekends, it's turned into a big, it seems like Rosemary Street from right a little bit south of Worth Manor, all the way down to the drive-in, is turned into a big car lot, flea market, people selling their goods out of trucks and stuff. It's become a seller's marketplace for the people that don't want to go and spend their money to pay for a booth at the flea market. If you are there Saturday and Sunday, you will notice that there are a lot of cars that are along the road, that they have the for sale signs in them. There will be people with little push carts with different juices and ice cream and everything like that, and different trucks that are selling different items for eating. So we've had a lot of complaints, because there's a lot of people holding up traffic on Rosemary. Then the drive-in, there's a lot of people that are parking across the street from the drive-in, turning on their radio and watching it for free. There, I don't know if the guy across the street is renting out his vacant lot or what, but if you go to the drive-in or go along Rosemary on a Sat, on the weekend nights, and maybe even tonight, there are a lot of people that aren't paying to get in, but they're sitting outside there in the right of way or off to the shoulders, watching the drive-in, and it's become a traffic hazard there. Because there are a lot of little kids that, when they get bored with the movie, they're out there just running around, and I don't want one to get hit, because they think that it's okay to do this. And my third thing, Mr. City Manager, if you could give the rest of the council an update on our sex, our sexual orient, about, yes, people with, Jason will tell you what I'm trying to say.
SVP.
Yeah, SVP ordinance, as related to the conference we had a couple of weeks ago, and what we found about, what we had, the ordinance on the books.
If I might, Mayor, two very brief updates. One is, we do believe the SVP may be in violation of the section of the ordinance that we've discussed, and he has been issued a notice. and he has been issued a notice. If he does not relocate, he would be in violation of that ordinance, and we will issue a summons. He was issued a 10-day notice last week. Secondly, through this process, we have identified opportunities to improve our ordinance. And so, staff, police department, city attorney's office are, are working on those updates to the ordinance, which you can expect in the next few weeks.
Great, thank you. Anything further? Thank you. I do have a few. I'm glad Mr. Bullock brought up the drive-in issue. The Gail Gardens Restaurant has complained to me about, especially Friday nights, Saturday nights at the drive-in. They said it's a parking lot, and their customers can't get to the restaurant. People parked watching the movies, and I think we need to make sure that we get police out there on those evenings to make sure that, that there's, there's a safe way for our residents to travel through that area without having the road blocked up because of movies. I also wanted to bring up the weeds along Quebec. I had mentioned it to Brian the other day. I noticed that they're getting extremely tall. When that happens, it makes it very hard for me to explain to the residents that they have to comply with our weed ordinance, and I wanna see if we can take care of that and get that mowed along Quebec, because they are looking very tall. I know they, they went to seed now. I'd like to get them down so that, you know, that corridor looks nice and clean, and right now it doesn't.
We will put an update in in next week's city manager's report. Some of those areas require mowing. Other areas do not, because they are actually native grasses and were intended that way so that they wouldn't require mowing. But I can perhaps visit with you after the meeting, get the specific locations so we can identify which areas should be mowed and which areas are native grasses.
And I understand that there's a lot of native grasses in there, and I know that it, there was a whole point about letting them go to seed so that it can help rejuvenate and be, be nice the next year. But all you have to do is drive down Quebec from basically 72nd Avenue, look at both sides of, of the roadway, and you'll see that stuff's two, three feet high on, on that right-of-way, and you'll see what I'm talking about. You take a look at that and see if we can't get that attention on that. I wanted to also mention the ward boundary map that was delivered to all council members. I think it's important that you all know that there was some confusion, and I know Mr. Amador was talking to the city manager, trying to figure out ward one, ward two, what color. You know, based on the ordinances that were passed, the map that you have is truly an accurate map in front of you. I wanna make sure that our residents, both at home that are watching or will watch at a later date, and those that are here, can come in, have access to get a map, to make sure that they know exactly what these, these are. And I think it's probably best if Mr. McBroom can give us a brief description about what the change that, what the problem was with it, and to get it fixed to be in accordance with the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, city council updated ward boundaries earlier this year. As part of that, city council also initially renumbered the ward boundaries sequentially, starting from ward one in the south, going to ward one in the north. Then we realized a potential conflict with the city charter, had to essentially flip the, the labels of ward one and two. So, now, if you were to go from south to north, it would be ward two, ward one, ward three, ward four. So, Mr. Amador is still in ward one. Because of the changes, we had staff quite honestly confused about ward numbers. The maps you have in front of you tonight are 100% accurate. That is the map that's been posted on the city's website. Not only are the ward labels correct, but the ward boundaries are correct.
Okay, does everybody get it? No comments or questions, just so you're all aware. So, you know the map that's before you. Everybody's still in the same boundaries, those who are gonna run, those who, who had, had intentions. It's not like we changed boundaries and stuff. It's just cleaned it up. And I'm saying this explicitly so that, because there's some folks here that intend on running for, for city council. I wanna make sure that they're not being dis- disincluded in anything that's going on here. I want you to come in and get a map. The map is available. There's not significant changes, but you need to know the, the ward boundaries. And we can make sure that you have this so that you are apprised, at the same time, this council is apprised that there was a concern about the map. It has been fixed, and the council's just receiving these this evening too. So, nobody got this information before anybody else, and most of the council members didn't even know that there was any issue. It is fixed, and they are available to you. So, I wanna make sure that, that's the only reason I brought it up. Make sure you all had the opportunity, same as the council, to get these maps.
And what I failed to say is, my apologies on behalf of city staff. We made it more complicated and confusing than it needed to be.
Thank you, Brad. Now, I needed to bring up something that I've been working on and need to take care of this evening. I do spend a lot of time in different meetings all over the place, but with work with staff, we were able to get the evaluation forms and processes in place. Again, this is the older, older format of evaluations that we used in the past, that I am used to, that Renee's used to. I know that the rest of the council probably hasn't seen or prepared an evaluation for the city attorney, the judge, and the city manager. However, tonight, I'm handing out to all the council members their packet. What you will find in this packet is an evaluation form for each of the three, city attorney, judge, and city manager. You will also find a self-evaluation that has been completed by each of those, those members of, of the staff. What I'm asking is that, where's my paper here? I'm asking that you all try to get these back to me, filled out. Make sure you put your comments down. Make sure you do a thorough job, read the self-evaluations. Get these back to me by August 12th. Then what I will do is take them, and the administrative folks will take care of the attorneys and the judges compiling of the nine evaluations that are put forward. You will get an evaluation back that is from the body of the council, one evaluation for each, each of, of the three staff perspectives that we're talking about. You will also have all the comments from all nine of, of the evaluation comments. You will also have the opportunity to, to look at the evaluations, make sure everything's, you know, so that you know that it's done properly. The city manager's evaluation, however, we're going to have the city attorney's administrative staff take care of compiling his, so that it's done fairly and adequately, and, and so that you don't have to worry about the city manager trying, you know, looking at or whatever, his, you know, how each person evaluated him. This is our evaluation. So, what those three folks will get back, after the 19th, after they're compiled, you'll all get the council body evaluation back. And then we have to agree on a date to meet. And what we'll do is we'll have Bob and, and Judge Juarez and McBroom here in another room. We'll sit down, we'll go over the evaluation, and then we'll call them in. And as a body, we will go over the evaluation with each one of them individually and discuss their performance and their goals and objectives for the upcoming year. I want you to keep in mind, as you're, as you're doing this process, if you see a way to make it better, some, some changes that may need to be made, different line items that maybe we need to add or, or subtract from, I'm very open to that criticism and want to have the best evaluation process that we can have for our representatives here at the, at the city. So, there just hasn't been an evaluation done in a long time, and it's time that we evaluate these folks on an annual basis. So, you will get the packet. Keep in mind that it doesn't have to ma-, have to stay this way, that those are things we can discuss on, on changes for the upcoming year. It may not be perfect in your mind, but I, I think after we get through this year, we can refine it to meet the needs of all the council members. So, go into it objectively. If you'll pass these down, you'll each have a packet. And then just remember on the 12th to try to get them back to me, and I'll make sure that they get compiled. Any questions on the evaluation process? So that can make sure that you, you all understand what the objective is here. Mr. Douglas, do you have a question?
Yep, wasn't a question that. I just, something different, so.
Something different?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions on what to do with these evaluations in the process? All right, everybody gets it? That's good. With that, before I go into reports, Mr. McBroom?
Did you intend to explore with council dates for the special meeting for the evaluation?
Well, we're gonna have, the way, the way this is set up is tonight I'm giving out all the evaluations. We're gonna return them on the 12th. On the 19th, we're having the scores combined and the comments completed and everything distributed back to the city council on that master evaluation. And then we have a council meeting on the 20th. So, what I, what I need the council to do is consider the 19th.
The 19th.
The 19th. On the 19th, between now and then, I want them to consider what dates during the week of the 19th that we can figure out what, when to meet, and then we can vote to hold a meeting on the, the night of the 19th and, and make sure that we have the process. We can get together on a, on a Wednesday, Thursday night or something here at city hall to take care of the evaluations. Is that understandable to everybody?
Yep.
Mr. McElhany?
I, I would just, and I appreciate the, the idea of trying to do it in the midst of the week. I would suggest that we look at either early on a council, regular, regularly planned council meeting or otherwise, just due to other conflicts and obligations, so.
You know what? I think a, a good, a good suggestion would be the study session night, that we can come in early, get it taken care of, and block out a couple of hours to take care of this. And then we'll go into our study session so that.
That'd be great.
Either, either we do it early, or we do it after the study session, because I know many of the council members have work obligations. But I think that we should coordinate with staff to, to, to put the time together. And for those of you that work, is it better to do it after the study session rather than before? So, you can all be here. Mr. McElhany?
Well, we're talking about which date? The 19th?
No, the 20th. It would be the 26th.
Of the budget retreat?
That's budget retreat.
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
So.
No.
I'm glad you have your calendar in front of you that says budget retreat. That's why initially, when I was talking to Brian, we were thinking sometime during the week.
Right.
Because the 19th, you know, we could end up staying late. It could be 2 o'clock in the morning. I, I just wanna make sure that I'm trying to be as flexible with the council as I can on your work schedules, so.
Well, I mean, if we're looking at the 19th, we could, we could reasonably come early. I mean, I guess it comes down to how much time are we expecting to, to, to spend? And I, and I say that with great hopes that we have really engaging dialogue.
Exactly, so.
My past experience with a prior mix of council was a very different outcome, where we had very little discussion, or very little constructive discussion. So, if we're gonna have good, good constructive dialogue, then I don't wanna short-change that opportunity. But at the same time, it also may be overreaching to try and do all three in the same evening. So, I, I do appreciate the, the desire to get these done in a near-term timeframe, but it may make better sense to try and maybe group two on one night, one another night. I don't know.
Well, if I can, after doing these, this, this style of evaluation for, for many years, what I've noticed is it's not very lengthy on the side of the attorney or the judge. We spend a little more time with the city manager. You know, their, their jobs are, are pretty condensed.
Yep.
On what they do. So, in the past, I would believe that we spent probably a half hour apiece on the judge and the city attorney, would you, would you say, Bob? And so, it's not very lengthy, but on the city manager, I would, I would wanna block out about an hour and a half. So, I think about a two-hour total to go over the evaluations with each one of them and, and discuss the goals and objectives. I think that that's, that's appropriate. So, if you guys can come in two hours early on that, that next council meeting, that would be okay. But I know you have work schedules, so it's, it's stay late, come in early, or we pick another night and come, and come down.
Come in early and stay late.
Yeah, or come in early and stay late, depending on if we can get it done. So, you know, I, I will, I'm flexible. I'll do whatever. I just wanna make sure that the council can make it, because it's important that the entire council's there. And you guys have your calendars in front of you. We can take this up at the next council meeting on the 19th. We do have a study session on the 12th. We can go over some, some dates and times. If you wanna go through your calendars and, and try to, try to see if we can put together a fit. But I, instead of coming here and saying, hey, on this night, we need to do this, I'd rather work it out, try to work with you than against you on, on the date and time.
Yep.
So, please, I think the important thing is, please look at your calendars, come back with some suggestions at the study session, and then we can, we can finalize the date and time.
And remember, we.
Mr. McBroom?
The only, the only suggestion, if you are thinking about the 19th and you wanted to do it before the meeting, you would need to do that tonight, unless the mayor called it as a special meeting after tonight.
And you know what? I think it's important to allow the council to determine, you know, some, their calendar flexibility. And if I need to call a special meeting, I will, just, just for time reasons, because I hate to lock in a time and date now, then have council members come back and say it's not gonna work. But I think if everybody does a little due diligence and, and figures out a date and time, we can talk about it during the study session and, and refine it. And then if I have to call for a special meeting, then I will. But I, I, I know timeframe-wise, I know staff would like to get this taken care of prior to, you know, the budget, everything else is going on. We'd like to get it done. It's been hanging over my head especially for a while, and I think it's appropriate to try to get it done. I don't wanna rush through it, but I wanna, I wanna make sure we get it done. So, please look at your calendars. We'll discuss it on the 12th, come up with some times and dates. Otherwise, that's all I have for administrative council business. And we'll go into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to briefly summarize the city manager's report that was distributed via email prior to tonight's meeting. We do have an update on residential permits in the month of July. I alluded to it earlier. We did issue 64 permits for new residential units in July, and staff's indicating that's the highest total for a month since May of 2007. So, clearly, it's trending in an upward direction. The big question is, how long will it last? We're, the mayor and I met with Shay Holmes, and they're not sure how long this is going to last. But we're certainly tracking it, and this month, it's certainly, or the month of July, a noteworthy number.
I just, yeah, actually I do. I happened to meet for dinner with a, a group of high school buddies. We try and get together at, you know, some interval, and a friend of mine is in the construction business, owns a framing company, and he supports framing for a number of the major builders. And just, you know, through conversation, suggested that everybody that he talks to in terms of builders and, and projections for next year, talking about fairly significant, fairly significant increases in terms of their planning for volume of activity. He went on to say that when he looks at where people are being active, it's in this part of the world. So, it sounds like there are difficulties in terms of the builders getting sufficient crews lined up, and that may be a gating factor in terms of activity. But he said that the projections for next year are pretty dramatic in terms of increases over where we sit at present. So, I don't know if any of that has trickled into the discussions that you had. I've had and heard similar comments from the folks at Shay, but was intrigued by, by the comments from my, from my friend.
The indications that we were seeing is that it continues to trend up. It was in our meeting with Shay Holmes, was the first that we heard that, this idea that there is pent-up demand over the last several years, that once that demand is satisfied, the market may diminish again. Lots of speculation going on, certainly.
And I'd like to, to make a quick comment. In, in the meeting with Shay, one of the things that, that we're noticing is there are a lot of infill taking place all over, all over the community. They're eating up the finished lots that we have, and I think before we. And I think before we run into the leveling off on permits, I think that we're gonna start running out of finished lots. And so I think that'll be a natural slowing process to get some of these lots finished and moving forward. So hopefully, that will, you know, automatically help take care of itself as demand and supply and demand take place. We were doing 1,850 homes or so back in '06, '07. We're on track to do 400-plus this year and that's a much more comfortable growth rate for our community than 1,800. So I think we're falling into a comfortable area. We need to make sure that we continue to push these lots to be finished so that we can have more opportunity for residential building. So continue with your report there, Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, sir. We've discussed the word maps previously. We do have a note in here about the 2013 ballot initiative outreach meetings this week. Other council members have mentioned it. Extremely important week for all of you. We think we have you well-prepared for those meetings. Please reach out if you have any questions. We've got a brief update on the chip-sealed contract. Very good news, the update to the Asprey contract was ratified towards the end of July. Staff led by Mr. Hayes worked with Asprey's negotiating team and essentially the contract was worked on in principle in May. Took Asprey some time to organize their election, but it was ratified, so that was very good news. That contract will take effect January 1st. We have some updated information on the 96th Avenue road closure, very unfortunate situation because we've been unable to pump that water anywhere. As far as I know, the road is still closed, the water is dissipating. If there's an update before we break tonight, I'll ask staff to let me know, but as far as I know, it is still closed without additional rain. We hope it'll be open sometime tomorrow.
If I may, Mr. McBroom, while you're on that, just so that everybody knows what happened is apparently there was a failure of a pond on the refuge site, so the water isn't a normal flow that we would receive. However, given the fact that the weather predictions are that we can have rain most of the day tomorrow and the next couple of evenings, we could see another storm like this, I was wondering if we've reached out to our other partnering entities here within the community, whether the water district has a pump system or whether the fire department can suck some of that up in a truck and disperse it to another area. If we've exhausted checking with some of those other entities, because if that pond hasn't been repaired so that we won't receive those flows again, the next couple of nights we may end up receiving more flows. And to reduce the potential damage of additional rainfall with those kind of flows at that location, I'd like to see if the staff could reach out to some of the other entities and determine if there's a solution to be prepared rather than try to figure it out if it happens again. And for the council's note, I did visit with Bob Gaylor a little bit and Brian about, since these were not normal flows, they weren't our cause, and if there are damages that we need to look to seek for some type of replacement of funds for repairs, that the city attorney and the city manager look to those who may be liable for helping us with any of that type of funding for repairs. So hopefully that covers it, but I did try to cover some of those bases early on, but I think that we need to utilize our local entities if we can. And I don't know what all the capabilities of the fire department are, if they can pick up and move large amounts of water, and it's just a matter of helping to reduce some of the roadside water, I don't know what they can do, but it does not hurt to ask to help working relationships between the entities.
I absolutely agree, especially if this is not going to be a temporary situation. It simply is not acceptable to have that road closed for an indefinite period of time. So we'll be looking at any and all options.
Thank you.
The last significant update for council's benefit, a number of you have had contact from folks in the community concerned about the Adel vice club on Monaco Street. There were some reports that the property had been sold. We wanted to get accurate information to you in the city manager's report. It has not been sold, but it is on the market. Interested buyers have been in talking to city staff, so it's possible that we will see a sale before the end of the year. Depending on who the purchaser is and what their intent is for the building, additional permits and licenses may be necessary. So that's it for the city manager's report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gaylor?
You will note that the ballot issue for the revenue raising rate increase appears quite lengthy. A lot of time and effort has gone into trying to devise that ballot issue in a manner that people can understand it. The problem that we have, that we've encountered, is that the bond consul insists upon certain things being in that. We've simplified it to the extent that we can, so when you look at the ballot issue, the whole first part is city staff's efforts and the second part, which is the, I'll refer to it as the legalese portion, comes from bond consul and I can't reduce that any further. Efforts have been made, we have reduced it some, but what you have is what is gonna go on the ballot. We're getting that finalized and it's being reviewed now by bond consul. We sent it out to him today, so we should be receiving back. But when you see it, don't be overly concerned that it seems more complicated than what it should be, but we simplified it to the extent that we can. And the main thing is it's got bullet points spelling out what the projects are and that's what we would hope people would see and the voters would emphasize when they go to vote on the issue, that they would note what those bullet issues are, which describes the five major projects. So I just wanted to give you the reasons why that ballot issue appears more complicated than what we would like. The second thing you should know about is there will be a second ballot issue and that's really a housekeeping and a change to the city charter because it calls for reference to elections at odd number of years rather than even number of years or vice versa. And we just need to make it consistent with what we have now with coordinated elections with the county. So there is that second ballot issue that'll be coming before you, but it's a housekeeping thing and it should not be controversial at all. And we put it on second to the revenue issue. So I'm available for any questions if you have any after you see these issues and you wanna talk about them further.
Right. Thank you, Bob. That's all I have. Mr. McBroom?
And one quick additional comment to Bob's comments, the sample ballot language and the resolution to set the ballot language is on your agenda for discussion next Monday. So the resolution that will include the ballot language will be sent out in your packet later in the week, this week.
Yeah.
And then one final note that I forgot to mention, Ms. Bauer had asked me to let you know and folks in the community know that those interested in running for city council, nominating petitions will be available in the clerk's office tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you. Real quick, can I ask you where we're at with the goats?
I'm sorry, where we are with-
With the goats? Is that taken care of? Is it all done now? I haven't received any more complaints, but the goats?
I know we issued a summons, but I must confess, I don't know the latest.
Okay.
I'd be happy to check that and send council an email.
Yeah, send me an email. I just, I know if they're not gone, I'm gonna receive more comments about it, but I just like to double-check to see where we're at with the issue, so thank you, it just came to mind.
Very good point, we will check and email council.
Okay. I did type all of my report, but for some reason, it's not on here, I lost it somewhere, but I have it in another location, so just bear with me. I attended the airport coordinating committee with Mr. Teeter, water commission meeting, Rotary, all three weeks that I'm trying to catch up on. I did take the Union Pacific Special Train Ride with Councilwoman Elliot and Maria, the Director of Public Works. That was a, not only was it a fun ride to take the train that hauls the Frontier Day train and see the old engines and everything else, but the important part of that ride, we had a meeting with the UP and talked about increased train traffic that they're expecting and anticipating, additional 500 cars a day, which is basically five unit trains of 100 cars per train, which will have some impacts on the UP coming through Commerce City. I did meet with the regional manager for the area from Colorado Springs to Cheyenne, covers all the area for the UP. We have his contact information. I think it's important that all of our departments, police, public works, those departments that may need to have that immediate contact, that the administrative staff share that information, that contact information so that if a police officer sees an issue with the train, they know who to call, they know how to get it taken care of so that they have, you know, and especially if there's a safety issue with a car maybe getting hit by a train or whatever, a closed track, something broke down on the track. But just so that we have good responsive, adequate information for our safety personnel, I think we ought to look into the B and N track and try to make sure that all of our safety divisions have emergency contact information so that we can get a hold of those trains if we need to stop trains, if we need to do, if there's a maintenance issue, someone hurt a track, whatever it is, so that we can protect the people in our community by having a quick response because it's tough to get hold of these railroads to get notifications. So if we have updated information, I think it's gonna be helpful. So that's the good side of that trip that we took. I did attend the Music in the Park as well as many of the council members. Let's see. Have an area boards meeting, went very well. Most of the entities were there, the only one I think missing was South Adams. Discussed mosquito control. There was an update from Tri-County that they're seeing a lot of rabies and skunks and bats, so our residents need to try to steer clear of getting in close contact with skunks and bats, call the dog catcher, whoever, you know, the animal control officer to help you with some of those issues. But some good updates from all the different entities. I know that the staff, I did not go intentionally to the community meeting that was held. I know council member JD Carson and Mayor Protem Bullock did attend the required community notification that was held at Grace Baptist Church concerning a new resident that is a sexual predator or, McAdonick said it the best earlier. Yeah, that's the one I was thinking. Yeah, SVP. And from everything I've heard from the DA's office as well as the council members, that it was very well managed by our department, very good information and nothing was allowed to get out of hand, it was very well constructed. So thank you to your team there, chief, on their efforts, putting that together and notifying our residents. And thanks to JD and Renee for attending and bringing that information back. I did have a meeting with staff and Keywit, representatives from Keywit, again Rotary. I met with Brian several times over the last three weeks with staff. I did an article, an interview for Bloomberg News Tuesday, the 30th. They, it was a very lengthy interview. Michelle Halsted and me were in the room and it was over the phone, so we expect to see some kind of an article coming out of Bloomberg News. It is all specifically around the Dick's Sporting Goods Park complex, soccer stadiums throughout the nation, how they operate, what kind of deals were made, when we expect to see revenue generated off the site, when we expect to see development happen on the site. They asked about the timeframe of the October 2014 deadline to take down land by Kronke. I think the interview went well, but that doesn't always mean that the articles could come out well, so I'm in anticipation to see that article myself, but I wanted to give the council a heads-up that that interview did take place. As Mr. McBroom mentioned, we didn't sit down and meet with Shay Holmes, talked about some of their concerns, some issues, predictions, what they see happening, but for the most part, they were pretty supportive. Talked to them about the upcoming potential for this ballot issue and the improvements to Tower Road and what that does and, of course, you know, there's that, we don't, you know, be careful with the rec center, we don't wanna hurt our metro district, vice versa, whatever. I think the discussion about Tower Road offset a lot of that, but my sense, my takeaway was that they were supportive of the ballot issue. Would you agree there, Mr. McBroom?
They certainly did not indicate that they would object, that's certain.
Yep, that's right. They absolutely said they would not object, so that's good news that we're moving forward there. I did attend Derby Days, as did many of the council members. I did get up and speak a little bit, mentioned the ballot proposal that's upcoming. I couldn't stick around because I had to be down at the Adams County Fair. I participated again in the celebrity livestock show competition. I think there was about 18 celebrities or elected officials, they weren't also, I don't consider myself a celebrity, but elected officials. And we showed steers this year. I guess next year it's gonna be goats, but it's something that's fun to do. I'd like to make sure that you guys know about it next year, come down and participate. They do it every year. This year, Doug Dar, the new DA, Dave, can't think of his last name, Dave Young, Commissioner Tedesco, former Commissioner Larry Pace, there were just a lot of different celebrities or elected officials that participated. It's really a fun program, they team you up with a 4-H student that has an animal to show. That student then spends time with you to explain to you about what it involves in showing, how to show the animal, but also how much it weighs, what its name is, when it was born, what they feed it, how much they feed it. And so when the judge comes and hits you up, they wanna know, do you know what his name is? Do you know how much he eats, of what kind? So it's really a good program, it helps raise scholarships for the 4-H students, so it's beneficial and it's a lot of fun, you get dirty. Unfortunately, the last few years, it always seems like the county elected officials all take down the top prizes. You know, that grand champion this year was Chaz Tedesco and, you know, I still think that that, I don't know, if he's totally a grand champion, he's up there, but I don't know grand champion. However, we all end up with ribbons and it's just a fun day that helps support the youth throughout our communities and through the county. So please try to make a point to go next year to that. With that said, I'm up to today in my calendar. Yeah, 'cause that's the end of my report. If there's any additional additions to the report for the council, I'll take them now. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, there was an article, I think it was yesterday, Sunday's paper on Riverside Cemetery, and the article had it in Denver and Adams County. Riverside Cemetery, two-thirds of it is in Commerce City, and I would love to have somebody just call up the Denver Post and correct that article and let them know that as much as Denver wants- as Denver wants everybody to think that it's all in Denver, it isn't. It is mostly in Commerce City, and I don't know if the article hinted at them trying to get the whole cemetery or something, but if anybody, we would probably be the ones to get the whole cemetery instead of them. But I just want a correction on that because it was brought to my attention, and I read the article, and I knew where Riverside Cemetery lies, and it isn't in Denver. Its parts of it are in Denver, but most of it's in Commerce City.
Okay. Any other additions to the report that I gave? Mr. Douglas?
Oh, not to, just something different. Can I add?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. I want to thank the city council members and the staff that attended the CCBPA, Commerce Business Professional Association. Guest speaker was Ed Perlmutter, there was a really good turnout, I was a breakfast sponsor, we had 75-plus people there. Attended the Ed Cog Dinner with Renee, and I want to say thank you very much for, for those who attended the meeting with Ed Perlmutter. Thank you.
Great, thanks, and that's exactly what this time is for, is any additions to the report. Is there any others? Saying none? No, miss, do you have something? Mr. Amador?
Under reports for when both Councilman Douglas and myself attended the Building One America Conference next week, both myself and Councilman Douglas are working on a PowerPoint to bring back the information and bring it full circle, so you'll see that next Monday.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there's no further business to come before the city council this evening, we are adjourned. Now, please keep your seats. We have the E470 CGID meeting, and I will call that to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Board member Amador?
Present.
Board member Teeter?
Here.
Board member Carson?
Present.
Board member Benson?
Here.
Board member Maccoldony?
Here.
Board member Elliott?
Present.
Board member Douglas?
Here.
Vice Chair Bullock?
Here.
Chairman Ford?
Here. Thank you, we have a quorum, the, let the record show that all of the board members are present tonight. First item on the agenda is ordinance CGID, I guess is the only item on the agenda, CGID 01. Is there any board member who has questions in regards to this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding this ordinance? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Maccoldony?
Would move to approve ordinance CGID 01.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I'm a motion in the second to approve ordinance CGID 01 on first reading. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2013 Budget of the E470 Commercial Area General Improvement District (ECAGID) by Acknowledging Receipt of the Sum of $2,500,000 from the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District (NIGID), Appropriating Said $2,500,000 by the ECA GID and Authorizing Expenditure thereof."
Thank you. A motion and a second, title's been read, and I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Miss Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Maccoldony?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, I would just note that expenditure is misspelled, so.
Ms. Carson?
I'm sure you'll get it.
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Amador?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes. Let the record show that the Board of Directors has approved unanimously on first reading ordinance CGID 01. Next item is reports. Are there any reports from you, Mr. Manager? Mr. Gaylor?
I have none myself. Any of the council have any reports for the ECGID? Saying none. No further business to come before the Board of Directors for the E470 CGID meeting, we are adjourned.
Lisa?
I was putting, thanks. $4,000,000. I don't go to breakfast lunches.